We'll call this Public Hearing Zoning Bylaw Amendment 1962-2018 to order at 7:00 PM on February 26th. We have an agenda before us. Any changes to the agenda?
No, there's none.
Thank you. We have supporting documentation for the bylaw 1962-2018 zoning bylaw amendment to accommodate data center and server farms. We have the notice of the public hearing. We have a memo from the Director of Development Services. We have a memo from the Community Planner. Just a reminder to the council and to the general population in the council chambers that this is a public hearing. We are here to hear speakers in favor or opposed to the proposed bylaw. Council is not to enter into debate. You can question for clarification, and then there is a resolution in the regular meeting to follow. So with that, we'll go to Administration to walk us through the support documentation. Anthony?
This is basically a bylaw amendment to add data centers and server farms as permitted uses in the industrial light zone of the city as well as the industrial heavy zone. This was, this bylaw came forward because there's interest in new developments that would involve data farms and server farms within the city of Thompson. Nothing really further. We've not received any comments to date or any objections. Would recommend second reading.
I should also advise the general public that Counselor Byer has joined us by phone. Counselor Byer, can you hear us? Counselor Byer?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to receiving presentations in favor or opposed to the proposed bylaw amendment. Speaking in favor, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposed to the bylaw amendment? Second time, anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor or opposed to the bylaw amendment? Third and final, anyone opposed or in favor to the bylaw amendment? Seeing none, I move for, I would look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Deputy Mayor Smook, Counselor Foley, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. We stand adjourned. Call the regular meeting of council to order at 7:03 on February 26th. We have an agenda before us. Any changes to the agenda?
Is there?
Yes.
I'd like to submit a written notice to rescind. Resolution 2018-046 is regarding the request that the Province amend the Thompson Charter Act, which is for the changes of the composition of council number. Here's my written notice. Thank you.
Request as procedure for, to rescind the resolution as outlined. The process is that it's received at this point, and at the next regular meeting, it will put on the, will be put on the agenda for discussion. Any changes to the agenda proposed? Seeing none, we'll need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Counselor Valentino, Counselor Ellis, all in favor? Carried. Counselor Penny, or Counselor Byer?
Yes.
Were you in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. I heard a beep on the phone and someone joined us. Carried.
Hello? Someone, someone join?
Yeah, Rick from Warner's.
Just give it a minute. Brad? Yeah, sure.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 3.1, Presentations and Delegations. We have wastewater treatment plant update from StanTech and the Water Services Board. We have representatives on the phone as well as Counselor Byer. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sepatelli to coordinate with the presenters.
So if we can have Anthony and Perry maybe go to the delegation desk, and we'll get them to undertake the delegation.
We are online.
So if we can get people that are on the line to introduce themselves and the company that they represent.
So my name is Sybil Basu. I'm with StanTech Consulting, and I have Rob DeConic also from our office, who's involved in this project as a contract administrator. And I believe, Perry, you are there?
Yes, I'm here.
Do themselves and who they're representing for the general public.
Perry Punyak, I'm with StanTech and working directly with Sybil and Rob DeConic. I'm the resident contract administrator onsite full-time.
Anthony McGinnis, Director of Development Services, working with the manager of infrastructure, overseeing this project.
We also have Brad.
Brad, did you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. I'm Brad DeGrave from with the Better Water Services Board, and I'm working with the StanTech and the city team to administer this project.
Floor over to Sybil, and Anthony is here. He has the control of the mouse to control the slideshow. So Sybil, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe we have 10 minutes. So Anthony, may we go to the outline slide, which is the second slide?
Okay.
So I'll be, I'll provide a brief safety moment at the start of the meeting, give you a quick recap on the project background. Some of it was presented earlier in the council meeting last year, sort of addressed the key project proponents, and what is more key is talk about the project timelines, provide a project update, and then you probably have questions. So if you go to the third slide, which is the safety moment slide, Anthony?
Yep.
I thought it was appropriate, given that you guys are getting a lot of snow and cold weather, and then here in Winnipeg, we are getting the opposite at times, cold and thaw. It presents a lot of challenges when driving. So just a couple of key points here is that make sure that you understand the road conditions before you're embarking on a trip. Carry an emergency kit all the time. If you feel that the conditions are bad, then make a decision that it's probably better to turn back and find a place to park yourself if the weather goes bad. Advise people that you know as to you are on the road so they have an idea when you reach the destination. Just remember that, you know, it takes longer to stop on roads with slush and ice, so just be aware. And more importantly, the bridges and overpasses are extremely slippery even the rest of the road isn't. So driving in this condition is very dangerous and critical, and so just to be aware of the road conditions would be critical. So just be safe. Let's go to the fourth slide, which is just an introduction slide to the project background. Please show us the next slide, which provides the wastewater system overview.
Yep.
You're there?
Yep. Sorry.
This is a slide that we have used whenever we talk about Thompson. Basically, it shows what you have as an existing infrastructure. There are eight lift stations. You have a sewage treatment plant on the northeast corner of the town there, at the city, which is your existing sewage plant. It's a primary wastewater plant. On the south side, you have the Red at the Goo. In the future, we are trying to consolidate that into a centralized wastewater treatment plant adjacent to the existing sewage plant. And a brand-new pre-road lift station is being constructed, which will transfer all the sewage from the south side of the city that currently goes to the lagoon, to the new treatment plant via a new dedicated force main that will be running along Weir Road on the east waste, and then on the north-south along Princeton Drive, eventually coming into Nelson Road and finally ending up at the sewage treatment plant. So if you go to the next one, it kind of provides you a bird's-eye view of the concept. It shows all the different sewage force mains coming into the plant. Some of that already exists at the existing plant, the new one being the pre-road. And then on the top left, you see a new outfall that would convey the final lift and the discharge into the Burnwood River. If you go to the next slide?
Okay.
That provides a overview of the process. You know, lift station pump, the soros sewage will first screen it, go through the grit removal, and then the main secondary processes, the SBR. Following that, it will go into an equalization basin, and then pump it through the ultraviolet light. Instead of chlorine, we're using ultraviolet, and that will then get discharged to the Burnwood River. The excess sludge would be digested to get rid of all the pathogenic matter, and then de-watered. So we are going to have a dry product that would go to the landfill. Next slide, please.
Okay.
We understand odor is a huge issue currently, so this treatment plant will actually treat all the foul air, all the odorous air that are generated in the process will be treated through a bio-trekling filter or a biofilter. It's basically a biological means, no chemicals are used, and the clean air would then be discharged into the atmosphere. So kind of shows you a, shows you a type of the bio-trekling filter we will have. Obviously, the plant is not yet being built, so I took a similar photo from a similar plant from the city of Brighton, which would be kind of similar to what we are going to propose, what we have proposed for Thompson. Next slide, please.
Okay.
I won't spend much time. I've talked about it before. All I'm trying to say here that the design population is 15,000 for this project, so I'm just going to skip to the next slide.
Okay.
This kind of shows you the tank layout, and you probably get a better appreciation of this when we show you aerial photographs. So it shows all the different tankages that are being constructed right now. The part that is highlighted yellow is the part that is at a grade level, and the green one is all the different tanks, and the building sits on top of it, which, if you go to the next slide, Anthony?
Yep.
Shows the various buildings. So as you can see, the buildings occupy only part of the tank. We're using the tank as the foundation for supporting the buildings, and this approach allows us to reduce costs because the buildings do not require separate foundations. If you go to the next slide?
Okay.
That shows you the concept of the treatment plant. Obviously, this is a rendering, but it would closely match what you're going to see once the project is done. And if I can move to the following slide, which says key project proponents?
Yep.
So city of Thompson, obviously, you guys are the end client. Manitoba Water Services Board is representing the province of Manitoba and providing project management services. Water Services Board is also the contracting authority for us as the engineer, as well as the general contractor of being Bird Construction. CanTech, that's us. We are the design engineer, and we are also providing contract administration services. We are partly located in Winnipeg, partly in Thompson, which is what Perry is there or representative onsite. And Bird Construction is the general contractor who's responsible for the construction of this facility. Next slide, please. Go to the photograph.
Okay.
The first photograph, maybe Rob, you want to talk about briefly?
Okay. So this photo, the photograph is taken in the, what's going to be the pump room. So this is looking towards the east, and underneath that scaffolding is actually the start of what will be the pipe gallery, and that is the location where all the force mains are going to come into the sewage treatment plant.
Okay. The next one, please.
Okay. So this photo is just showing, this was taken a few days prior to the previous photo, and it's just kind of showing all the steel that goes into that same area.
I'm going to jump in here. I want to give the council an appreciation of the depth. As you can see, there's a lot of rebar here. It takes a lot of time to put all the rebar together, and in between the rebar, if you watch closely, and I guess we'll have another slide, we have all the pipe sleeves being constructed. The tank depth at the maximum level is approximately 24 feet, so you can understand that that's quite a bit of height, and a lot of rebar that is required to, for structural stability of the walls.
Yeah, a lot of pressure from, a lot of pressure water on that wall.
And there is liquid inside, so there's a lot of pressure. Let's move to the next one.
Okay. So this photo is taken from the southwest, sorry, southeast corner, looking towards the north. So from here, you can see those columns. That is actually where the support for the lower floor area, which will be like our chemical room, de-watering room, there is a maintenance shop, et cetera. And then in the distance, you can see kind of a tank there that is actually SBR number two.
Okay.
Next photo is showing, this is SBR number one. This is taken from the north side, looking kind of towards the southwest, just showing the columns in there that's actually going to be supporting a beam, which will then support our pre-cast slabs, which kind of make up the roof structure of the SBR tank.
Just quickly, I have to add that the top floor of the tanks is a combination of carton plates where the buildings is, and the rest of the, the rest of the tank is pre-cast so that it costs, to lower the cost and to fast-track the construction. So the part that you're seeing will have, is completely covered, but it will have pre-cast slabs on top of it. Let's move to the next one, please.
Okay.
Okay. This, this next one is just showing typical pipe sleeve that passes through a wall.
Okay. The next is a kind of an interesting photo. Anthony, the aerial photo, please.
Yep, it's there.
I have to acknowledge Bird Construction because they put a GoPro on top of the crane, tower crane, and this allowed us to take a bird's-eye view of the tanks. Just a few slides back, if you recall, I showed you the drawing of the tank layouts. This kind of gives you the idea how the tanks are, and you can see the river towards on the north, and all the different columns that we are showing still coming up. It's a pretty nice picture, gives a good appreciation of what's coming in. Moving on, very, can you, very quickly, in a minute, talk about project site safety as to initiated by Bird and what's going on?
Okay. Well, Bird has a site, safety committee, meeting that's required in all larger-scale projects like this, and it's a committee that's collective with all their trades that come to site. And Manitoba Workplace Health and Safety have been onsite on multiple occasions, and so far, you know, the improvement, there have been some improvement orders, but they've been very minor, like adding some fire extinguishers for the fuel-fired heaters that we have that's needed for the concrete work. And, and just helping them set up what's required by Manitoba for their safety committees and working around here. So as we start closing up all the tanks, and the workers go inside the tanks, and that's starting to be considered a confined space, so Bird acquired a basket stretcher that basically you could put a person like in a stretcher, but the stretcher gets carried out by the cranes that are onsite. And they've had the local fire department onsite, and they've done a mock run, and I'm told that their, their mock run took about eight minutes from send, putting out the alarm to the workers onsite and getting the stretcher and putting it onto the crane and down into the, into the tank and hoisting it out. And that was all done with the fire department present, and they were all quite pleased with the short time that that took. All workers that come to site are mandatory to do a Bird safety orientation, and we do it, we all look out for each other and ensure that, you know, all work areas are, are safe and, and, what was I going to say?
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Good.
Anthony, the last slide, please. This is a critical slide. I think you are probably eager to know where we are at with the project. Just a couple of key timelines. We started construction in June of 2017. The first concrete pour was on July 25th. The foundation was completed September 18th of last year, and it is anticipated that the concrete works would be completed mid-April 2018. Now, you see that I've highlighted that in red because from the current status, we believe that that wouldn't be the case. We estimate that Bird is roughly about a month behind schedule, so that date will likely slide somewhat mid-May. But there is a long ways to go, and we are hopeful that Bird is going to catch up. The anticipated date for completion of all the superstructure buildings is October 2018, with the steel frame being done by June 2018 earlier. All mechanical works by November 2018, and electrical by the end of the year. Stanford will allow us to start up and do some commissioning starting January of next year, and hopefully have the project substantially completed by March 2019. We are expecting a more detailed submission of schedule by Bird that would break down more of those dates at the latter part of the project, which they haven't done yet, but we are anticipating that it's going to happen very soon, right?
Yeah, well, that's to be received next month.
Yeah. So like I said, we, we think we're, we believe they are about a month behind, but there's a lot of room to catch up, and we are optimistic that they'll do that, and we will get the project completed on time next year by March. And that pretty much is our talk today. We can then take some questions.
Now open up the council for any questions or clarifications. Kathy, or sorry, Counselor Valentino?
I just have a few comments. I mean, obviously, I know nothing about building a wastewater treatment plant, so I appreciate this presentation, and I look forward to regular presentations because obviously, for me, concerns is timelines and dollar, and hearing we're a month behind. I don't want the next presentation to be, oh, two months behind, so I appreciate we can get regular updates. The other thing I appreciate also was your detailed safety report. I thought that was very good. And the other thing for me is to ensure that Bird Construction has a, tries, or we try to employ our own local people to be a part of this project if can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, Counselor Wong?
Yeah, I, the only concern I have because of the, the concrete work is a kind of a delay for almost a month. Would it cost extra for the overrun budget or still on budget right now at this moment? Based on, please.
Do you want to answer this, or do you want me to?
I briefly caught that. I really couldn't get all that. Can somebody repeat the question?
The occasion of being a month behind schedule and also the concrete work, would the additional work identified be a cost plus to the project, or is that covered within the project?
Did you copy that?
Yes.
Yeah. Answer that question.
Okay. So if the concrete works are a month behind, there will actually be no cost seen to the project. That is a cost that Bird would incur. They're the ones that are responsible overall for their schedule, and this project is a fixed fee, or sorry, a lump sum price. So they're responsible at the time of bidding to determine how much of a cost to achieve their, their schedule. So a month delay should not see any additional cost to the project.
Was there a question as to why there is a delay?
I think that was clarified at the last meeting, in the last report given, but if you, if you want to speak to that quickly?
Yeah. So I, in fact, Bird is fully aware. The council should make a note that there is a commitment as per contract that they need to be substantially completed by March of 2019, and if they slide beyond that date for reasons beyond, like for reasons due to their own shortcomings, there's a penalty clause that can be enforced at the discretion of Water Services Board, the city, and StanTech. We frequently see this situation. Sometimes we look at how much of an effort they have taken to sort of expedite the schedule, and we do not enforce it. It is at the discretion of the contract administrator and the client. So what it is, it's a penalty of a dollar value per day, which is called liquidated damages, but I don't want to go there right now because, as I mentioned, there's a long time, and they obviously have a ample opportunity to catch up, let's say that. But yes, the concrete works certainly, they're falling behind a little bit.
And it's also a topic of discussion at the bi-weekly meetings with the contractor, that we put them on notice, that we are
That's right.
Monitoring their schedule and, and tracking that.
Yeah, like we, we obviously have meetings every two weeks, and this schedule is on the top, top of our list, and we make them aware as to how much they're sliding or what efforts they need to do to catch up. But at the end of the day, they are the ones responsible for the construction. We are just administering the contracts, so they are fully aware and, but we have brought this up in every meeting and will continue to do so.
Counselor Byer, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much for doing this. I was concerned that not being able to see the slide presentation that I would be totally out of the loop here, but I was able to follow it, so thank you very much. I do have one question, and maybe I heard this wrong. It was right around slide 11. You had some various buildings, and I just thought I heard you say that a tank, the tank supports the building. Did I hear that correctly? And if I did, can you please explain? Because I'm used to pile supporting buildings.
That's correct. That's correct. So he, that's a good question. So, you know, typically, if you go to a sewage treatment plant, other than Manitoba, the tanks are open, okay? And the buildings that houses all the mechanical equipment and others are on to the side in a separate structure with pile foundation or other foundation, depending on the soil conditions. What we have done because of the weather and the operational issues due to cold temperatures, we tend to cover our tanks, and this is a design that StanTech has developed through small projects and now into bigger jobs, where we are able to combine the two concepts, bringing the buildings, the operational and the office buildings, on top of the tanks. That allows us a compact design, as you can appreciate, given the site, we have to keep space for future expansion, and that integration allows us to put the two structures together in an integrated facility. And there are obviously support beams and other stuff that would span to support the buildings, but yeah, it is, it is the tankage that is basically taking the load from the structure above.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Smook, you had a question?
Yes. My question is, with the concrete work not being done mid-April, and I know there's subcontractors that have hotel rooms and all that booked up here, will there be opportunities for them to start some of the work even though the concrete work is not done, or will they have, they also be delayed the month?
There is, and again, I can let Rob speak to it, but I know there are some parallel activities. The mechanical contractor is already onsite.
That's correct.
Not much has happened, but he, his opportunities will open up as some of the concrete works are done and the form works are removed. As you saw, those pipe sleeves are there. There will be things going on within the tanks. Once those tanks are done, we'll have to obviously do testing for leakage either before or after, but there are some parallel activities. You want to add something?
Well, there isn't much to add, other than our understanding of Bird's layout schedule for completing the work is that they're going to try to finish up one part that, I believe the north end of the facility, and that will actually allow work for the electrical and mechanical subs to proceed in those areas while they are working on the concrete in the other, on the other end. So there are things that can be done to stage the work to get the subs going sooner, and as Sybil mentioned, the mechanical sub is onsite already. They've been going through the materials they've received, and they're ready to start installing in the next couple of weeks here, so they've been making preparations for doing so.
Thank you. And I'd just like to reiterate that Counselor Valentino's operating local, hiring local operators and laborers from Thompson as they're needed, if possible.
Any other questions of council?
I think Bird is aware of the, to maximize local, yep, labor and contractors, yep.
And they've also met with Vale Mine Human Resources with the layoffs that have occurred there, and, but some of the skills that come out of the mine don't necessarily line up with the, the trade skills that is needed on this site, so there are some, some voids there, maybe locally, but Bird is open to receiving, you know, resumes and applications for, from locals.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you all for the presentation, both those on the line and in person. Thank you much, and as council has said, we look forward to the next presentation. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Bye.
Is anyone still there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, okay. Uh, next up, we're going to go to, uh, general inquiries. Are there any questions from the general public in regards to, uh, council? Please come forward, state your name, and ask your question. Good evening.
Gentlemen, Godfrey Bohajer from Thompson.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I have some information. Is this per- permissible?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, mayor and council have been advising, and council, to slow down because of the conditions this winter. If it lasts, uh, council meeting, Deputy Mayor Smoak advised everybody to slow down, drive according to the road, which is good advice, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
But I'm afraid that the RCMP have not been cooperating with this, and they're stopping people, thinking they are drunk. I was stopped myself on the 17th of February, on a Saturday, and there is more to it than what I'm telling you, but track my word for it. They're not cooperating. Just to let you know, perhaps they, you know, somebody should, uh, say, hey, uh, we, we're advising people, and I thank you for the advice. It's good advice. I take it, you know, but, uh, they've been stopping people for, for driving too slow.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Any other questions from the general public? Second time, third and final. Thank you. Uh, next, we're going into the adoption of, uh, minutes, and we have the, uh, regular meeting of council February 12, 2018. Resolution 2018-051, moved by Councilor Ellis, seconded by Councilor Valentino. Be resolved that the minutes, the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, February 12, 2018, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carrie Dunas, thank you. Uh, next, we have the correspondence. Uh, we have a letter from Kelly Bindle, our MLA, uh, for Thompson in regards to the grant in lieu discussions. Uh, the letter states, "Dear Mayor Fenske, in response to your letter dated January 26, 2018, it was my pleasure to meet with you and your administration and members of the council present on January 12, 2018, at Thompson City Hall, to discuss requests you have of the provincial government regarding your municipal government's pending five-year grant in lieu of, uh, tax payment reduction agreement with Vale. Uh, as stated, you informed me of information you had previously discussed with Growth and Enterprise and Trade Minister Blaine Peterson, and that you were planning to schedule a follow-up meeting with him in the near future. As promised, I have since had the discussion with Minister Pedersen, uh, regarding our meeting, and informed him of your formal request to have a province apply three to four persons to sit on the committee, with three to four persons chosen from the city of Thompson to formulate a plan to deal with the anticipated reduction of revenue due to the reduced grant in lieu payment for Vale and other market factors affecting Thompson. Also informed Minister Pedersen that you would be contacting, uh, him to follow up on this request." Uh, comments from council? Uh, if council would permit, uh, I, I did, uh, want to clarify that, uh, uh, MLA Bindle refers to a five-year, uh, grant in lieu. It's actually, uh, four years, uh, of the, uh, the new grant in lieu, uh, that has been reduced. Uh, we have had a subsequent meeting with Deputy Mayor Dave Dyson, uh, in Winnipeg to discuss, uh, moving forward. Uh, Deputy Dyson, uh, took the information I provided in regards to the impacts of the GIL, the Grant in Lieu, in regards to the transfer of the waste, of the water treatment plant, uh, and also the, uh, reduction in workforce, uh, through Birchtree and the, uh, smelter and refinery. I'm anticipating, uh, a meeting request from Minister Pedersen's office or the, uh, Assistant Deputy Minister, uh, Dave Dyson for a, a follow-up meeting in March, uh, to discuss further, um, directions or opportunities to, uh, discuss further the, uh, the Mining Reserve Fund for mining, uh, communities. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll receive, uh, for information. Second up, we have, uh, another letter from, uh, Kelly Bindle, MLA for Thompson in regards to Thompson Business Investment Municipal Relations. The letter states, "Dear Mayor Fenske, in several meetings throughout autumn 2017 while engaging different, uh, provincial ministers and I, you had mentioned the city of Thompson was offering to provide some type of waiver of fees or taxes or other incentives to encourage local businesses to invest in renovations or upgrades to their existing properties. I'm curious to understand more about the program and how successful, successful it has been in enticing local business investment in the north. At this time, I would like to request more information, such as what types of incentives are being offered, how is the program being advertised, what is the application process, who is responsible for deciding eligible investments, what is the allotted value of incentives, how are successful applicants announced, how many and which local businesses have benefited? I look forward to your response. Yours sincerely, Kelly Bindle, MLA for Thompson." Uh, I'll go to, uh, Mr. Sepatelli or Anthony to, to discuss the bylaw that was passed in regards to the, uh, taxes or the, uh, assessment, uh, program.
Yeah, sure. So, obviously, council, uh, which had passed the Financial Assistance Bylaw, really, uh, targets two, uh, two types of, uh, of investment. One is new construction, another one is, is renovation. So, really, the, uh, the intent or the, uh, the gist of the bylaw is that there is a, a waiver of certain percentages, uh, of taxes that are based on the increase in assessed value from, uh, the base point to, uh, what the new assessed values are. So, I think this, uh, this aspect here is that the action, uh, I would recommend that, uh, we follow up with the response letter to, uh, to MLA Bindle, uh, and sort of, uh, attach a copy of the Financial Assistance Bylaw for, uh, for his record as well.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McKinnis, anything to add? We're good? Good, thank you. Uh, next up, we have a letter from Jeff Wharton, Minister of Municipal Relations, in regards to UCN tax credit and the grant in lieu. Uh, this letter is, uh, dated February 20th. "Dear Mayor Fenske, I'm pleased to have had the opportunity to meet with you and your members of council at, uh, the November 27, 2017 Association of Manitoba Municipalities Convention. In our meeting, you expressed concerns regarding a number of important issues from the municipality. This included the University College of the North, UCN Tax Credit, Vale Canada's Grant in Lieu of Taxes, Regional Funding and Community Safety Officer Program, and Red Tape and Government Efficiency Opportunities. I understand the city is concerned that the annual municipal taxes on the UCN and Manitoba housing student residents are less than projected, and the city's contribution may take longer to repay than the original 25-year estimated timeframe. The city's contribution is fixed at $6.675 million and will not increase regardless of the timeframe over which it is paid. Under the city's agreement, uh, with the province, To- Thompson is able to retain 50% of the tax, annual tax revenues generated, uh, on the UCN and Manitoba housing properties. The province always recognizes the financial and economic impact the recent slowdown in Vale Canada's mining operation has had in the city. I appreciate the assurances from the city that all parties, including School District of Mystery Lake and the Local Government District, uh, District of Mystery Lake, uh, will be included in discussions with Vale Canada regarding the distribution of Grant in Lieu of Taxes funding. All municipalities, including the city of Thompson, are facing with managing unique challenges and priorities to ensure safe and viable and healthy communities to their citizens. Thompson and the RCMP came together as Manitoba's first partnership in creating a community safety officer program. I am pleased to see that Manitoba will continue to provide support in Thompson for this community-based public safety initiative in fiscal year 2017, 2018. In our meeting, you also discussed the city's need for additional funding, uh, to address regional issues. Our government is committed to providing municipalities with a fair say on the investment of provincial funding in their communities starting in 2017. Provincial funding to municipalities was, is being provided through a new basket funding model. We will continue working with municipalities to refine the new basket funding model and ensure provincial funding programs address the needs of municipalities. Our government is also committed to reducing red tape, and in support of this initiative, Municipal Relations is pursuing a number of measures to ensure that legislative framework for municipalities meet their needs. Municipalities will be provided with more streamlined options and/or reduced regulatory requirements related to municipal governance and land use planning. The concerns you have raised in our meeting regarding the timeliness of municipal board hearings will be considered. Once again, thank you for your opportunity to meet with you and the members of your city council. Sincerely, Honorable Jeff Wharton, uh, Minister of Municipal Relations." We'll go to council for confirmation, or, for, uh, questions or comments. If council will indulge, I'll just comment on a couple, uh, uh, comments made within the letter from Minister Wharton. Uh, I would direct, uh, council to the second paragraph, uh, where it states that, uh, "The city's contribution may take longer to repay than the original 25-year estimated timeframe." It's estimated now that it would take 44 years, uh, to, uh, to have the equal amount of the $6.675 million repaid. Uh, under the city's agreement with the province, Thompson is able to retain 50% of the annual tax revenues generated on UCN and Manitoba housing properties. To reread that sentence means that the province of Manitoba would receive 44 years as opposed to 25 years of reduced taxes at 50%. This is unacceptable. We've made that known to Minister Wharton, and we will continue to, uh, discuss solution to this, uh, issue of an agreement that we signed in principle that wasn't delivered by the province of Manitoba. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you. Uh, now, we're going into resolutions. We have a resolution to approve, uh, one, a one-lot subdivision and public walkway on existing public reserve plan number 32600 PLTO. We have a memo from the Director of Development Services. We have a memo from the Community Planner, and we have a map. Resolution 2018-052, moved by Councilor Foley, seconded by Councilor Wong. Whereas the city of Thompson has been advised of proposed subdivision application submitted by McDonald's Restaurants of Canada Limited to create one lot and a public walkway on an existing public reserve plan number 32600 PLTO, and whereas the city of Thompson has reviewed the application, has no concerns, now therefore be resolved that the city of Thompson advise Municipal Relations Community and Regional Planning Branch that it approves the proposed subdivision subject to the approval of, one, approval of Public Reserve Closing Bylaw number 1963-3018 for Public Reserve Plan Number 32600 PLTO, an airplane circle. Approval, number two, approval of variance order number, uh, V0980 to reduce minimum required parking stalls from 58 to 30, and three, the proponent entering into any easement agreements required by Manitoba Hydro. We'll go to administration for support. Anything to add?
Nothing. I'm only that this is, uh, required part of the development agreement with McDonald's Canada.
Thank you. We'll go to council. Any questions or comments, uh, from the mover, Councilor Foley?
Okay.
Council, any other questions or clarifications? If council, if council will indulge, just a comment in that this is a very good news story as, uh, as part of the process moving forward. Uh, as mentioned previously, publicly, uh, and in, at council meetings, that the current owner, franchisee of McDonald's, uh, is heavily investing his, uh, reinvesting into his business in the city of Thompson as a franchisee of McDonald's Canada, which shows to, uh, show, uh, a lot of, uh, of, um, positiveness in the sustainability and future of, uh, Thompson as a good place to do business. So, with that, I would, uh, call for the question, all those in favor. Passed unanimously, thank you. No, sorry. Oh, okay, sorry, Councilor Byer?
Aye.
Sorry, I missed you. Okay, uh, next up, we have a resolution to declare 102.9 CHTM 2018 Trade Show a special event. Um, we have a memo from the License Inspector. Uh, Resolution 2018-053, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Councilor Foley. Whereas the 102.9 CHTM 2017 Trade Show is scheduled for the weekend of May, uh, just back up, and that should be a friendly amendment, should be 2018 Trade Show is scheduled for a weekend of May 4th, 5th, 6th, 2018, and will take place at the Thompson Regional Community Center, the TRCC. And whereas the 102.9 CHTM has requested that this is declared a special event for the city of Thompson, now therefore be it resolved, the council declares that 102.9 CHTM 2018 Trade Show a special event in the city of Thompson. We'll go to administration for support.
Yes, it's an annual event. Uh, they request special event status every year. Uh, they will pay the $1,184 per...
Thank you. Go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak, anything to add?
Um, just like to say, uh, the special event status, it brings a lot of, uh, people to the community to do business, get some unique, uh, ideas, and this way, not everybody has to get a transient license. It's all covered under one umbrella, makes it for a much easier transition.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Councilor Wong?
The last year?
I just asked for these appointments.
Probably like 2%?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Byer, any questions?
No, I'll do it.
Thank you. Uh, call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie Dunas, thank you. Uh, next, we have a, uh, resolution to approve a tax deductible receipt application from Nickel Days Inc. Uh, this is Resolution 2018-045, uh, 054, moved by Councilor Valentino, seconded by Councilor Foley. Uh, whereas on April 28, 2014, council passed Resolution Number 2014-112 approving the tax deductible donation receipts and trust policy. And whereas a tax deductible receipt application has sub- sim- has been submitted, and just a friendly, uh, amendment, it should scratch out 2018 and should state submitted by Nickel Days Inc. And now therefore, therefore be it resolved, the council approved the tax deductible receipt of, uh, application submitted by Nickel Days Inc. Uh, we'll go to administration for support. Anything to add? Seeing nothing, we'll go to Councilor Valentino, anything to add?
Uh, just that this is coming, go to the Finance and Admin Committee meeting. Um, and if anybody's been on committees before, if you're trying to get a grant or anything for your organization, you always seem to need this, so this is a, a good thing for us to do for the Nickel Days.
Thank you, council. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie Dunas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the attendance of Deputy Mayor Smoak at the 2018 Provincial Budget Presentation. We have the invitation and a memo from the Executive Assistant. Resolution 2018-055, moved by Councilor Valentino, seconded by Councilor Ellis. Be resolved, the council approved the attendance of Deputy Mayor Smoak at the 2018 Provincial Budget Presentation in Winnipeg, Manitoba on March 12, 2018, and be further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. We'll go to administration for support.
I just indicate the, the cost of attendance of Deputy Mayor, uh, Smoak is just under $900.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Councilor Valentino. You want anything to add?
Uh, just that, uh, typically, the mayor attends this, but due to unavailability, then it should be our deputy mayor that will attend and represent the city of Thompson.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Councilor Madachuk?
I see no value in this, unless, of course, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Smoak had some input in the, uh, the, uh, budget to start with.
Not sure the question...
Well, she don't, she didn't have any input in it, so why would she be there for the presentation, where she can just pick up a newspaper like anybody else for far less than $900?
Taking input into the provincial budget?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other, uh, just to clarify, uh, Councilor Madachuk's, uh, comments, um, normally, the, uh, the mayor is invited, uh, to this, uh, annual event or of the, uh, provincial budget. It's an opportunity, uh, to discuss with ministers that are present, uh, issues that have come out of the budget, as well as outstanding issues that, uh, that are, uh, on the table, such as the Grant in Lieu discussions, such as the UCN taxation, uh, such as the, uh, transfer of the water treatment plant, um, and such as the, the downsizing of, uh, Vale Canada from, uh, by 700 employees. Uh, this opportunity, uh, again, as we lobby ministers, uh, and this government for assistance through the Mining Reserve Fund, uh, it's in our best interest to have representative at the budget meeting, uh, presentation, and also to be able to, uh, address or discuss with ministers there and, and even the, the premier, if available, uh, to, to discuss this. I know that, uh, Councilor Wong was at the last one with myself and, and, uh, Mr. Sepatelli. We were, we were able to, uh, talk to Premier Pallister as what, as well as other ministers. Uh, and again, giving the, given the ongoing lobbying that we are doing on ongoing businesses, uh, on, on doing issues, uh, I believe it's imperative that the city of Thompson be front and center, uh, at the time of the budget to, uh, to ensure that, uh, that our issues are, again, raised if they aren't being, haven't been addressed in the, in the budget. Uh, Councilor Wong?
Okay, um, the question is almost identical to Councilor Madachuk, but I just want to clarify one thing. The reason I was there last time because of, uh, with the AMM duty, and, uh, MLA Kelly Bindle saw, uh, knew that I was there, so he sent the invitation, so it doesn't cost the taxpayer a penny to attend that, uh, budget. Uh, according, according to that email from the, uh, communication and stakeholder relation, I believe this kind of email is just a common practice, standard, uh, procedure, so, and again, uh, I don't think, uh, any value for, uh, uh, Deputy Mayor to be there, which is, like, again, buy a newspaper or the TV station will, will show up all the budget, what we need to know. And also, I'd like to point out another thing, it's like, we are AMM member. AMM, the chair or the president or the deputy president, they're all going to be there. So, because we are the member of AMM, so we also get notification from AMM what they're seeing there. They always have a presentation there. They always have a presentation there. Another thing is like, I'm not dispute about the lobbying effort, which is the mayor has been doing quite regularly. And I don't think any minister will have any more time, like, because we just talked to them about a couple of weeks ago, to lobby about the same old, same old, which is the U C N, the valid downside, not downside, like cutback, and the G I L, and then the whatever, on and on. So, I don't see the value, and I don't see they have time to entertain, again, within a short period of time, unless you have some sort of confirmation that you are meeting someone in that meeting when you're present. Otherwise, I don't think I can support this. And record a vote, please.
Thank you. Counsel Foley?
Uh, just that I think that I'm in favor of this, and the reason being is because they have asked for representation for multiple municipalities of the province, and I think it's important that we go there, ask any questions that may be, may pop up at that time, and get that face-to-face contact. It's no different than when we expect our municipal residents here to come to our budget hearing and presentations, so that they may have those questions asked. I feel it's our responsibility to be at that provincial level and ask those questions, as opposed to just waiting to pick up a newspaper and picking it up from somebody else's interpretation of what happened at the budget presentation. We should be there. That's one of the things that we are here to, you know, we need to be financially responsible, not only on the, taking care of the municipal side, but also finding out what's going on from the province, directly from the province, as opposed to secondhand or thirdhand information. It's not something that's been, it's been new. I don't believe we had an issue with us going last year, or the year before, or the year before that, so I'm not too sure why all of a sudden, going the fourth year, it's a bit of an issue. But definitely in favor of doing it, and I think it's a responsibility that we have to our taxpayers, that we send somebody. We're not sending multiple people, which means we're not throwing away dollars. I mean, we do need to have some representation there.
Counsel Calata?
Thank you, Your Worshipful. I'm not going to support it either. We discussed cutting council's travel budget during our budget deliberations, and it's not a case where we're going to have an opportunity to ask questions or have input. Counselor Smook, or Deputy Mayor Smook is not a member of the Finance Committee, but with our financial challenges, I just think that it's a great public relations thing for the provincial government to invite municipalities to be present for the reading of the budget, but I don't see, I don't see a benefit to us. If we're serious about cutting our council's travel budget, this is the sort of thing that we have to look at, at cutting, so I won't be supporting it.
Deputy Mayor Smook?
Yes. I think it's very important that we attend this, just as if, I know a number of our council don't attend when the ministers are in our chambers, and every time that we get to meet them here in the chambers and express our interest, I've found that when we do go to Winnipeg, like, when I was at the mining conference, there was a couple of different ministers there, you can feel freer to go out and talk to them, they come and talk to you. Then, they know you're in the loop, because you've already talked. You get to talk to other mayors of other communities concerning the budget while you're down there, and to say that there is no actual thing to talk about, I'm sure once that budget comes down, and we get to go see it a half an hour before, there will be questions. And I do personally know a few members in the legislature, I have no qualms, and just further to Counsel Calata's comment, I am on the Finance Committee this term.
Counsel Wong?
I just want to make sure that Counsel Foley understands how this budget presentation work in the ledge. You don't get to ask question. Okay? So, I just want to make sure that you are aware of the process of, you just sit there and listen to the minister presentation, so.
Thank you for that education.
Thank you.
I'm in support of this. I believe we need to have a representative at, in the ledge during the budget presentation. Every opportunity that we have to present our case in terms of our lobbying abilities is to the better, and there will be other municipalities, there'll be in attendance at the, at this presentation, and we can't be forgotten. It's easy to be forgotten, being from the north, and we need to be in front of the government as much as possible.
Byer?
Uh, yeah, it might be a little too simple, but the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and I think, right now, the more that the province hears us, the more likely we will be heard. And I think it's important that we're all playing from the same songbook, so I would assume that Deputy Mayor Smook will be saying, delivering the same messages to whichever minister she can see, as you would, Mayor Fenske. And it would be nice to get a report back in terms of whatever lobbying success there has been on this trip.
Deputy Mayor Valentino? Oh, sorry. Counsel Valentino?
Just to close, if I may, as the mover, just a couple of things I want to say and reiterate that. I apologize, actually, for some of the comments. Our same-old, same-old issues, they aren't same-old, same-old issues. Our issues, that we are advocating to the ministers and to the province, are the forefront of what's going on in this city. And every chance we get to let the province know that we have issues, we have to be there. So they aren't same-old, same-old. I think it's clear in the letters that were read tonight in our correspondence, that this is the top forefront of what's going on here around our city. And if we have the opportunity now to go there to say, yep, we're still, we still have issues, we're still here, it's important for us to be in the forefront and in there, then we have to be there. So absolutely should we have representation there, and yes, it is going to be Deputy Smook. And yes, it is, she may have an opportunity to talk to them, and they may see, oh, the city of Thompson is here. That's a good thing, because I just wrote some letters to the city of Thompson. But we have to keep advocating for what's going on here, and this is part of the process. We can sit back and do nothing and buy a newspaper. That's crystal clear that some of our councillors do that, but this representation for the city of Thompson isn't to sit back and buy a newspaper. It's to be there when we can be there. So definitely, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. With that, Counsel Wong required a recorded vote, correct?
Yes. Mister Mayor, I'd like you to ask Counsel Foley, repeat the last word he used after he finished the comment.
I didn't say.
I can reach your lips.
He mumbled the word, but I couldn't hear. Okay, so Counsel?
Would you like to ask him to repeat?
Counsel Wong, Counsel Wong. I just asked for.
The last word.
Both of you, please, I ask for some decorum in this council chambers. We're all adults here, we have serious conversations to have. Excuse me, Counsel Wong. We have serious discussions to have, we have serious decisions to make. I would ask your indulgence in being professional and moving forward. So with that, in a recorded vote, I would call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Voting in favor, Counsel Ellis, Counsel Byer, Counsel Foley, Counsel Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counsel Madichuk, Counsel Wong, and Counsel Calata. It's carried. Next, we have a resolution to approve an agreement extending, operating agreement for self-funded Community Safety Officer Program, and we have a memo from the city manager. Resolution two zero one eight zero five six, moved by Counsel Ellis, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smook. Whereas on June fifth, two thousand and seventeen, council passed resolution number two zero one seven, one four seven, allowing the city of Thompson to enter into agreement with Manitoba for the continuation of the Community Safety Officer Program from June twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, to May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas the city of Thompson has requested Manitoba extend the agreement prior to the end of the term in accordance with the provisions of subsection twenty-five bracket one. And whereas Manitoba has agreed to extend the existing agreement to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, moreover, Manitoba has identified a one-time payment of one hundred and fifty thousand to the city for assistance in operating, in operation of the program. Now therefore be it resolved that council approve entering into the agreement extending an operating agreement for a self-funded Community Safety Officer Program for the period of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Vote administration for support.
The resolution is self-explanatory, and the commitment of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars by the province of Manitoba requires that we enter into this agreement, but also, more critical is really the extension of the applicability of the agreement that we have with the province for five years, and basically to sort of retain the legislative powers that the C S Os currently enjoy through that, the agreement that we have with the province of Manitoba, and currently, really, from an operating perspective, is, as a city, we operate with six full-time officers who operate between ten to seventeen hours per day, depending upon the availability, seven days a week, excluding statutory holidays.
Thank you. Mover, Counsel Ellis?
Yes, I'm in favor of this. I'm the. That the province is putting forth one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I think it's important that we extend this program, we self-fund this program as the city of Thompson. I think we've seen the value of this program, especially last May, when we couldn't have our officers on the street. The R C N P noticed it, and I think members of the public noticed it, and so it's very important that we extend this program to two thousand and twenty-three. Please to see that. Yeah, I'm in favor.
Questions, comments? Counsel Wong?
Mister Mayor, I have to ask a question about the province that identified the one-time payment, one hundred and fifty thousand, commitment. Where's the document to support this identification? Second question, second thing is like, if we enter five years, do we have the money to fund this, continue for the last, next four years? So, I have a problem with that right now, because the challenge we are facing, and I don't like to show that, I mean, I like to see more things going on here, and job creation, but I don't see any commitment right here from the province that before, without the document support, and I'd like to abstain this, and record a vote, please.
Okay, I'll go for Mr. Sepatelli first on the request, or the approval of the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, one-time funding.
The actual, I mean, obviously, that we were, been informed verbally, and the actual documentation, which council all has a copy of, is the actual agreement that is being put forth, which is subsequent to the resolution that's being passed tonight. So that identification is the formal documentation that the province of Manitoba will issue one hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a one-time payment to the city of Thompson. The term for the C S Os is really gives the city the opportunity to continue running a C S O program if they so choose, with those abilities set out by the province in provincial legislation. So this doesn't say that we have to, it just, we have that ability in place in order to continue to operate a C S O program if council so chooses in subsequent years.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Foley?
I'm just a bit wrong here, Gary. This is, as you said, to operate within the next five years, is to avoid the issue through legislation and having to get reapproval every year, which this time had given us a, it was a couple of weeks where we didn't have the proper legislative power for their officers to do their job. Is that correct?
That is correct. The last time, in two thousand and seventeen, the agreement expired May twenty-fourth. As obviously identified by this resolution, we never got formal approval to operate the C S Os until June twenty-ninth, so really, we had a six-week period where we were without the legislative authority to operate the C S O program as intended.
Just to follow up on that, it is still up to discretion of the council coming in forth after October two thousand and eighteen to decide on whether or not they want to continue with the C S O program. This just gives us the legislative powers to continue it if the next council does so decide to run it.
That basically means that. As with any program within the city budget, council can choose to continue with a program or not. As Counsel Foley has outlined, and as council is quite well aware, we've been advised, and it was prudent on both the Justice Department and our administration, to get the administrative authority for a longer term, so that it doesn't put the situation, situation that we felt that we were in this past summer, where the legislation lapsed, and we didn't have the legal authority for five weeks. So again, to recap, this is a move to ensure that the legislative authority stays in place. It recognizes that the province has served notice, they will make a one-time payment of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this fiscal year for the continuation of that program, and subsequently, if the city chooses to continue the program, it will be self-funded a hundred percent by the city of Thompson. Counsel Foley?
Just to follow up on that, for the information, that when the next council comes in, they'll immediately be going into budget deliberations, so they will have that, at that point in time, the conversation on whether or not they want to continue the C S O program based on the budget for the following year. So we are in no way saying that the next council has absolutely, with their hands tied by their back, to continue this program. It'll still be up to them at the next budget. We just want that legislative ability, that if we do, if they do continue it, they don't have to jump through some of the same hoops that we jumped through this time.
With that, I'll call for the question and a recorded vote. All those in favor? Abstentions? Reason for abstention?
Mentioned earlier, so, because of lack of some document support, so I would like to abstain.
So the vote is carried forward with one abstention. Thank you. Next, we have bylaws. First reading of bylaw nineteen sixty-two zero one eight, campaign expense bylaw. We have the bylaw nineteen sixty-two thousand and eighteen, campaign expense bylaw, and a memo from the Executive Assistance. The bylaw reads, resolution two zero one eight zero five seven, moved by Counsel Valentino, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Be resolved the bylaw nineteen sixty-two zero one eight, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson, to establish specific campaign finance rules be introduced and read a first time. Vote administration for support.
Yeah, just indicating, obviously, as the pending municipal election, October twenty-fourth, there's a number of housekeeping amendments that we have to make to our existing bylaws, and one is the campaign expense bylaw. So in order to change the applicable dates as required, is to rescind the, or the current bylaw and replace it with the bylaw nineteen sixty-two thousand and eighteen. The values of the campaign expenses stay the same as they did in two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you. Moveover, Counsel Valentino?
Aye.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have first reading of bylaw nineteen sixty-one, two zero one eight, vote-counting machine bylaw amendment, and we have the bylaw as support documentation as well. Resolution two zero one eight zero five eight, moved by Counsel Valentino, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Be resolved the bylaw nineteen sixty-one, two zero one eight, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson, to amend bylaw nineteen twelve dash two zero one four, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson, to authorize the use of vote-counting machines in the city council and school board elections in the city of Thompson be introduced and read a first time. Vote administration for support.
So this is the second bylaw that requires an amending to reflect the date of the pending municipal general election, which is October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. Mover, Counsel Valentino?
I have a question.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Next, we have a second reading of bylaw nineteen sixty-two, two zero one eight, zoning bylaw amendment. We have the bylaw nineteen sixty-two thousand and eighteen. We have memo direct from the Director of Development Services and a memo from the Community Planner. City of Thompson, resolution two zero one eight zero five nine, moved by Deputy Mayor Smook, seconded by Counsel Foley. Be resolved the bylaw nineteen sixty-two, two zero one eight, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson, to amend the city of Thompson zoning bylaw, number eighteen ninety-one dash two zero one two, as amended, be given second reading. Vote administration for support.
Today's public hearing, where it's advertising the Thompson citizen on the seventh and the fourteenth is required in the Planning Act, and we've received no objections or comments to date. We recommend going to second reading, and if there are no objections, council has the opportunity to do a third reading.
We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smook.
No, this is just proaction on the part of city of Thompson, through the business of the company.
The future.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have a second, sorry, a third reading of bylaw nineteen sixty-two, two zero one eight. This is resolution two zero one eight zero six zero, moved by Deputy Mayor Smook, seconded by Counsel Foley. Be resolved the bylaw nineteen sixty-two, two zero one eight, be given third and final reading, and that it do now pass. Administration, anything to add? Deputy Mayor Smook, anything to add? Counsel, any questions? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a recorded vote for third reading. Voting, it's unanimous, carried. Voting in favor, Counsel Madichuk, Counsel Wong, Counsel Ellis. Voting in favor, Counselor Matichuk, Counselor Wong, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Byer, Counselor Clota, Counselor Foley, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak, and Mayor Fenske. Let's carry it. Next, we have first reading of bylaw, 1963-2018 Public Reserve Closing Bylaw. We also have the bylaw, 1963-2018 Public Reserve Closing Bylaw, Schedule A, and a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018-061, moved by Counselor Foley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smoak. Be resolved the bylaw, 1963-2018, being a bylaw to close a public reserve, be introduced and read a first time. We'll go to administration for support.
Just again, related to the McDonald Development Agreement, the land in question is currently deemed a public reserve under the Planning Act, and to move forward with the sale, the public reserve has to be closed, and that has to be done by first reading, or sorry, the bylaw amendment. And administration recommends its first reading with a public hearing to follow on March 26, 2018.
Mover, Counselor Foley, anything to add? Counsel, any questions?
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Counselor Byer.
This bylaw, and the other one that we just passed, are both really good news for Thompson. They're both speak to economic development, will speak to the ability to grow, and the interest of people to invest in Thompson. So I just hope people keep that in mind, that these are probably the most positive bylaws we could possibly be passing right now.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, thank you. Next, we have the first reading of bylaw, 1964-2018 Water Treatment Plant Equipment Reserve Bylaw, and we have the Water Treatment Plant Equipment Reserve Bylaw as support material. The Resolution 2018-062, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counselor Foley. Be resolved the bylaw, 1964-2018, being a bylaw to establish a reserve fund for the purpose of the water treatment plant capital requirements, be introduced and read a first time. We'll go to administration for support. Jen?
When the rate application currently before the Public Utilities Board, a funding is provided for the equipment replacement reserve for the water treatment plant. So this bylaw just creates that reserve so that if the application is approved, that money will be set aside for future capital replacements in the water treatment plant.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak.
Yeah, throughout the process of us taking over the water treatment plant, this has been part of the discussions all the way along, and we've talked about it at finance and that, so it's nothing new.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, thank you. Next, we have first reading of bylaw, 1965-2018 Composition of Counselors Bylaw, and we have the bylaw, 1965-2018 Composition of Counselors Bylaw as backup information. Resolution 2018-063, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by, or sorry, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Be resolved the bylaw, 1965-2018, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson, to establish the composition of council, be introduced and read a first time. We'll go to administration for support.
Yes, just for council's information and the general public, that at the previous council meeting on February 12th, council passed Resolution 2018-046 to request the province to amend the Thompson Charter Act, which enables, would enable the city to change the composition of council. So if it's council's desire to decrease council from eight counselors to six counselors, then under Section 79, subsection two of the Municipal Act, a bylaw must be passed authorizing the decrease of counselors. This will allow sufficient time for anyone who may be interested in running for council to be aware of the change to the composition of council. In order to be effective prior to the next general municipal election, the bylaw must be approved 180 days prior to the election date. As per Section 79, subsection four of the Municipal Act, a public hearing must be held prior to third reading to discuss the proposed changes. Right now is the administration recommends a public hearing be scheduled for March 12th and second reading of the bylaw for March 12th as well, with pending third reading and a subsequent meeting at this point intended in March 26th.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Counselor Ellis.
I'm in favor of this bylaw. It is one of our cost-cutting measures in terms of this budget, but also it puts us in line with other like councils where communities are the same size, Selkirk, Steinbeck, Porters Le Prairie, all have six counselors, right? So I'm in favor.
Questions? Counselor Matichuk.
This was discussed at the budget meetings, actually. It was somehow tied to the days off that the employees were possibly going to be asked to take, and it was supposed to be basically to share the pain, to show that we were going to do this. And for some reason, that was dropped, that part of it, for the council, or for us to expect them to take 10 days off, but this hung on for some reason. I don't understand why. Now, this came up in budget, but ultimately it comes from the GIL negotiation is where it comes from. And I spoke earlier on it, that the problem I had with this last council meeting was, it's the lowest two amounts of votes that qualify that you're eliminating. So it's getting rid of new blood, and I don't like that it's getting rid of new blood. And the biggest deal here is if we can have some kind of a trial period to see if this thing works. If the three counselors that negotiated, the GIL, were this miserable, this very poor GIL, were due to do the honorable thing and resigned from council, we would have a couple of weeks to find out whether we want to proceed all the way to third reading on this.
Matichuk, a point of order, your comment in regards to the GIL committee is totally out of line in regards to this discussion, in regards to the size of council. So I'd ask you to refrain from referencing any other council committees or their responsibilities in this discussion, Counsel Matichuk. And just for clarification, in regards to the budget discussion, this was one of 23 items that were identified in the budget discussion for consideration in cost reductions for the operations of the City of Thompson. This was not tied to any individual item suggested. This was a part of an overall plan. The context that it was placed at is that the leadership should provide leadership and start from the top down to consider the reductions. So it wasn't tied to any one other of the 23. It was tied specifically to the group of 23, which was reductions in the operating costs, just to clarify that point. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you, it's not tied to the GIL, but it's caused by the GIL. Okay. Often I use the terminology of cart before horse. Last meeting, we talking about the reason we wanted to put this up for the resolution that one I just sent in written notice for rescind. The administration and yourself say this is because of the Thompson Charter Act. We need to get that approved or manned by the province so we can move on to the next step. I also asked you the question about process. Were you a big fan of process? Because often you always say, "I'm a big fan of process, I like process." So me too, I like process. So my question to you, Mr. Mayor, have we get the response from the province yet about the charter, Thompson Charter Act?
In regards to the specific question, in regards to the charter, it was raised, as Mr. Sepatelli raised, the issue of changing, the wish of council to consider changing the size of council and the parameters that that included. It, in reference to the Municipal Act and the right of a municipality to determine the size of council, believed between four and 10 members. Subsequently, in those discussion, the charter was raised in that it is in conflict of the Municipal Act, that all other municipalities are governed by. It was suggested that the charter be cleaned up, to use a phrase, to reflect what's in the Municipal Act, so that it doesn't conflict with the Municipal Act. Again, that is one process to be followed, to align the two documents, the charter and the Municipal Act. That is also, when the alignment occurs, provides the opportunity for council to consider the size of council at the next election. That process, as outlined by Mr. Sepatelli at the start of this discussion, is there, this is the first reading of the bylaw. There is required second reading, there is required public hearing, and there's required third reading. In order to ensure that we meet the 180-day timeline, it's proactive on this council to move forward with the amendment to the charter as to align with the Municipal Act, and at the same time, move forward ultimately with starting the process in determining the size of council. The size of council at the next election won't be determined until the final reading and the third vote of the bylaw. So to work in parallel, to ensure that we meet the timeline of 180 days, is the process that we're following. Counselors, Deputy...
You still never answered my question. My question, have we get the response from the province or not? That process you explained very clear. I believe everybody heard it. But have we get the respond back from the province?
Response from the province is align your charter with the Municipal Act. That's what we're doing. Can I make it any clearer than that? Deputy Mayor Smoak?
Yes, this actually wasn't a sticking point in the Grant and Lou negotiations. I'm not sure where that come from. And also, if you say the bottom two are going to be getting, if we lose two more, two counselors, losing the bottom two gets rid of new blood, well, much to your chagrin, Counselor Valentino and myself were in the top three, so you wouldn't have got rid of us anyway. And I believe it'll be up to the public whether we want to go. I would hope the public comes out and tells us whether they want us to go down to six counselors, if they want us to go to seven, or they want us to remain at eight. That, to me, is a decision the community should be part of us to make, and I don't believe that this also reducing the number of counselors was tied to the days off for the employees. It was just one of 23 cost-cutting measures for the City of Thompson. Thank you.
Counsel Foley?
Yeah. Just when I see both sides to the argument of keeping the current numbers or changing the numbers, what I do like about the process going forward is that by going forward with the first reading, it opens us up to take us to the public hearing, in which case, I would very much love to hear what the public has to say in regards to the size of council. Seeing multiple times, there have been people who've said that, you know, we don't need this many members on council. And if that's the case, I would love to have them show up to the hearing, get their input. And at that point, we, you know, as the process goes, we go through the second and the third reading in order to meet timelines. So by approving this first reading of the bylaw, it in no means or way concretes the decision. So whatever decision is made at this first reading isn't the, may not necessarily result in the same outcome for the third one. So for me, in this case, the public hearing is very important, and I'll be getting, hopefully be getting a lot of input, and I'd like to see what the opinions are from the taxpayers, and let's see what they want. So this, giving them that opportunity, I would be in favor of the first reading.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino?
I've got a bunch of comments about this. First off, for some reason, you don't understand why this, where this came from? Well, it came from this document in November in our budget meetings that we all got, had nothing to do with the days off or Grant and Lou, but it was part of our discussions of where we sit in the province for other cities and municipalities and their mayor and counselor numbers. So when you see it, if you would have read it, done your research, you can clearly see that we have the most than anybody in the province. So is it really a budget item, or is it cleaning up how we're doing things? Is it looking at our charter? Yeah, it's a combination of things. So I don't see, when you look at every other city or municipality that's our size, smaller, we have the most. We're completely out of line on that. You talk about having a trial period? The trial period was on January 3rd of 1967, when they had a mayor in six. And then it switched when we became the city in 1970 to a mayor in eight. So the trial period's been done. All this has been done, if you do your research and do a little bit of homework. So I'll definitely be supporting this.
Thank you. With that, Counselor Wong? Clota?
Yes, during budget deliberations, I recommended a process that would realize the same savings, and we would reduce by one counselor, and I won't get into that and embarrass anybody. But if we're going to reduce to six counselors, this last year of the term, we've eliminated two counselors from holding chair positions. I nominated them numerous times for a secondary position on those committees, and they've been completely shunned from holding a position on a committee. So now if we have six counselors and two aren't active, we're going to have four counselors to carry eight committees. So it's not, it's not, if we have the same people come back in, it's just not practical. We would have four counselors carrying the load, and I have to oppose it.
Counsel Foley?
I'm glad you brought that up, Counselor Clota. Actually, that's one of the concerns that I do have is with having counselors, when you go to a smaller number, not being involved. However, some of the information that you've put out is incorrect. Yes, in fact, two members of council were nominated by other members of council for committees, but let it be known, it was them who that denied that nomination. It wasn't anybody else that took them out of the seat of being a part of any committee within the City of Thompson. It was them themselves who did not accept the nomination. So we need to be very clear on that, that, you know, we need to be responsible for our own actions on there. And it's exactly one of the things that I've got a concern about is that scenario, going into a smaller council, where you've got the workload then potentially being doubled by other counselors. It's a very valid concern, and I would hope it would never come to that. But like I said, we just have to make sure that the proper information gets put out when we're speaking.
Thank you. Counselor Byer?
Yeah, I did, just a couple of things I want to point out. Number one is, we talked about having new blood and open up the... Counsel, I'd just like to point out that more than half of our council this year was new blood. And I'm not sure that whether you have new blood makes that great a difference in what a council is able to do and accomplish, depending on what the obstacles are, the challenges that you face. It's nice to have new blood, it's nice to have the new perspective, but I think, you know, we're a council this year. If you want to talk about test periods, we've had a test period, we're more than half, we're new blood. The other thing is, in terms of the committees and the workload, I hear that, maybe when in the fall, we have our organizational review of committees, et cetera, maybe it's time to start streamlining some of those. Maybe we don't need eight committees. Maybe there's more efficient ways to handle those. So I think if we do proceed with reducing the number of counselors, then I think we'll have to look at how that workload is distributed and whether eight committees really are required or not. I'm not, we're going to pick on whether they are or not, I'm just saying maybe it's time we study this.
Thank you. Counselor Clota?
Yes, thank you. I nominated at least four times, and certainly not all of those nominations were declined, so I just wanted to correct that.
I'd like, Counselor Matichuk?
I'd just like to add to that, one thing that is being missed here, is yes, the nominations are for a member of a committee, but ultimately, it's the mayor that appoints. Whether you like it or not, you can be appointed, you can turn it down, but it is he who appoints the committee chairs.
Just for clarification, again, we need to speak in the whole sentence instead of half of a sentence, which means that council committees, as per our organizational bylaw, the mayor appoints the chairs of each one of the committees. Council then, through a nomination process, votes and appoints the alternative, or the second member of the committee, and in one case, the additional two members of those committees. So to say that the mayor appoints the council committees is incorrect. It's only the committee chairs that has been the practice of this council, the previous council, the previous council before that, and the previous council before that. So it's nothing new from that perspective. And so from that perspective, again, and I'm going to go to Counselor Ellis to close, but if I want to, everybody's had a chance to speak once or at least twice, I want to provide my comment in that regards to the overall picture and the context of this discussion. And again, I want to be clear to the general public, the context of this discussion is black and white. It came up as a part of our discussion on cost savings measures. The context was that the leadership should lead from the top and not expect others to take a bite and not themselves. So that's the context the council is considering. And again, as Counsel Foley outlined, this is the first reading of a three-reading bylaw, plus a public... plus a public hearing. At the end of the day, council will listen to the general public at the public hearing. They will debate in the second and third reading, and ultimately decide, one, if we are going to reduce the size of council and what the actual number is. We're currently at eight members and one mayor. It could be seven, it could be six. The recommendation out of budget was a reduction of two, from eight to six. That's not carved in stone. There's a lot of discussion to have. But I want to make sure that people talk about the context, and try not to muddy the waters with new blood or conspiracy theories or anything like that. This is a exercise in leadership, in controlling our costs as we move into very uncertain waters in regards to the economic realities that we're faced with. So with that, I'm gonna go to Council Ellis to close as the mover.
Absolutely. I think that this bylaw is about cost savings, right? So as the mayor said, it's, we have to lead from the top. We're asking, there'll be several cuts in this budget, right? So, and this will be one. And so we must lead from the top, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you. So in a recorded vote, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed. Voting in favor, Council Ellis, Council Byer, Council Foley, Council Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Council Matichuk, Council Wong, Council Kalata. It's carried. Thank you. We'll now go into the mayor's report. This is for activities from February thirteenth to February twenty-sixth. Attended and brought greetings at the First Nations Sustainable Solid Waste Management Conference in Manitoba and the Manitoba Games Prep Rally, and along with Council Valentino and City Manager Gary Sepatelli, met with support Manitoba on February thirteenth. Met with Minister Clark on February fourteenth, with Minister Wharton on February fourteenth. Met with Manitoba NDP Leader of the Opposition, Wap Kenu, on February fifteenth. Met with Assistant Deputy Minister David Dyson on February sixteenth. A budget meeting was held on February twenty-first. Along with City Manager Gary Sepatelli, met with Sherman Kong of Amic Inc., and had a visit from Mrs. Santos' grade-four class from E. Cole Riverside School on February twenty-second, and I attended her class on February twenty-third, as well at E. Cole Riverside School. Attended and brought greetings at the Wayne Saheco inaugural Memorial Pre-Novice Hockey Tournament on February twenty-fourth. The weekly games boards, board meetings continue. The biweekly Thompson 2020 conference calls continue. The monthly water treatment plant meetings continue. There are various committee meetings were held, Development Review, Finance Administration, Recreation Community Services, Communications and Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs. There are no proclamations at this time. And just a reminder, we are less than a week away to the Manitoba Games. If you haven't signed up as a volunteer, there's still opportunity to sign up and provide support to the games and the athletes who are visiting our Thompson, our community. Again, this is a great opportunity of six days to present Thompson to the rest of the province, and also to see elite athletes at a very young age, that hopefully one or some of them may be future Olympians. So it's a great opportunity. I encourage everyone, it's a free event as well, so that during the games, please drop by the event venues, which include the TRCC, RD Parker Collegiate, the Crossley, Cross Country Ski Trails across the bridge, Mystery Mountain, the Norplex Pool, and I believe the Cold de Nord with table tennis as an exhibition sport. So with that, I will go to counselors for any other reports, any other commitments. Deputy Mayor Smoak.
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending and giving words at the forty-eighth Mun Cup. There was twenty-one teams literally from all over the north, Rankin Inlet, Arvita, down to Swan River. It was a great weekend with the kids. I was there a few times, back and forth, and just a camaraderie among the hockey players and the parents in the City of Thompson. Thank you to the Recreation Department and everything for all well done. Attended the last two games of the Norman North Stars this weekend, didn't quite go as we had hoped, but thanks to the coaches and all the people that did attend, it, those boys played their hearts out, and thanks to them for a great season.
Any other reports? Seeing none, call, oh, sorry, Council Byer, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, no, just to, I also have the opportunity to read the grade fours, which is always a pleasure, but also, as my role as liaison to the community's teachers and our healthmen, I was able to present the graduation certificate to Don Glenn, also known better maybe of Shorty's Upcycle Land, and this is a significant, evolve program for assistance, not just financial, but mentoring, et cetera, to people who have illness or disabilities that prevent them from working a regular job with regular hours, and who wish to become entrepreneurs. And so Don Glenn certainly met all that criteria, and he has graduated, and he's having considerable success. That was nice, being able to do that.
Anything else? Council Byer, you're good?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, call for motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Smoak, Council Ellis, all in favor, we stand adjourned. Thank you, have a good evening.
Bye, Benny.